Ladies and everyone, welcome to the February 2016 State County Freedom Freedom Report. We begin tonight as every night with our conference agenda, starting with the role of culture. Freeholders up there. Best.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
James.
Here.
LaFleur.
Here.
Deputy Director Lazare.
Director Bartlett.
Here.
So, for those of you who aren't familiar with the conference agenda, it's when we talk about important upcoming initiatives, recognize important people in our community, before moving on to our regular meeting. Administrator, let me ask you to begin.
Thank you, Director. First on the agenda is an initiative started by our Freeholders Director this year, launching a State County Complete Count Committee for the upcoming census to make sure that everyone is counted, accounted for here in Passaic County. I think, pretty well known that it's, over the years, we have felt that there's been an undercount, if you will, in the census, so the goal is to try to get to as many people as possible. So, Freeholder Director, I'll turn it over to you. I do know that the Secretary of State was supposed to be here as part of this program. Her office has said she is running late, caught in traffic, but she will get here at some point, hopefully, during this, or at least Black History Month. Director Lawrence.
Thank you very much, Anthony. So, I'd like to welcome up to the table in front of us, the Regional Director for the United States Census Bureau, Jeff Beeler, as well as Eric Kipnis from the Office of the Secretary of State, Teisha Wick. And, Eric, your colleague as well, I'm sorry.
Lauren.
What are you? And Lauren is going to join us. Could you sit down a little time?
Yes.
So, for the rest of you in the audience, you'll be looking at their backs, but this is where we're going to hear about the importance of complete census count. As part of this program, I'm going to introduce the members of our Complete Count Committee here in Passaic County. But let's start by hearing from the United States Census Bureau and the Secretary of State's office.
Well, thank you very much. Again, my name is Jeff Beeler. I'm the Director for the New York Region of the U.S. Census Bureau. It's one of six regions we have across the United States. We're going to be responsible for data collection throughout New Jersey, New York, all the New England states, and Puerto Rico. So, why do we do a census? U.S. Constitution, Article 1, Section 2 mandates that we count everyone living in the United States, not just those who are here legally. We count everyone, and that'll be our job. We're expecting to count over 330 million people and over 140 million housing units. So, we have quite a challenge ahead of us, and we need your help. And I'm going to talk about two ways in which complete count committees and community members can help the census and help our community. First thing we always ask for is help with jobs. We're going to be hiring hundreds of thousands of people nationwide to work on, in very short-term, temporary positions. In Passaic County, we'll be offering $21 an hour, plus mileage reimbursement or transit costs while on official duty. That also includes paid training. Requirements: 18 years of age, must be a U.S. citizen. On the back table there, there's some information on our website, 2020census.gov/jobs. We are recruiting right now. We will be hiring over the next 18 to 24 months. We'll be hiring for office positions, we'll be hiring for field takers. This is a great second job for a lot of people. You can work part-time and be successful working nights and days. So, a great opportunity to support your community, earn some extra money at $21 an hour, and support the 2020 census. The second thing I want to talk about is really the partnership, so the engagement, the education, the motivation of the community members. And there's three messages I want to talk about. First off, the census, it's safe, all right? Private information is never published. By law, Title 13 prohibits the Census Bureau from releasing any information on an individual or a household. I don't care if the current administration comes to us. Homeland Security, INS, FBI, CIA, no one can access our data per the law. And that law has stood the test of time in federal court. In 1982, we were challenged, someone asked for our address list. Shortly after 9/11, we were challenged with providing information on people who lived in certain areas around the country. We won the case in federal court. Title 13 has stood the test of time, and it's the foundation of everything we do. So, the data that will be provided to the census is safe. All census employees, anyone who has access to census data, is sworn for life, and if we break that oath, we could be fined up to $250,000 and imprisoned for up to five years for releasing any personal information that identifies an individual or a household. All the data we release are statistical summaries, whether that's at a county level, or a census tract level, or congressional district level. We do not release information on people or households. The second message I want to mention is that it's easy. So, there'll be four ways that you can fill out your census responses then, in 2020. For the first time ever, we'll be online. Majority of the country, the very first mailing they receive from the Census Bureau won't be a census form, but it'll be an invitation to go online and fill out their census form. So, that's the first way. The second way, we've always provided toll-free telephone support. This will be the first decade in which we will accept people's answers over the phone. So, you can call in your census information, both online and over the phone. We'll be in 12 non-English languages in addition to English. So, we'll have operators that speak all 12 of those languages. You'll have the ability to, with a drop-down menu, to select your particular language, if it's one of the 12. Let's say Creole. You can select Creole and then fill out your census form online. The third way is via paper. Everyone, if, at a certain point in time, if they haven't filled out their census form, we will mail the NLA census form that they can fill out, as they've done for the past few decades. And then the final way to be counted in 2020, the most expensive thing that we do, is when we hire, we're anticipating anywhere from 375,000 to 400,000 people nationwide to go out there and knock on doors, collecting that same information that's on the form. And what is that information? We ask for your name, your age and date of birth, your race and origin, whether or not you're Hispanic origin. As of right now, there's a citizenship question on the form. Your relationship to the first person on the form, son, wife, mother, daughter, your gender, your tenure, whether you own or rent your home, and some operational questions. We do not ask for social security number, we do not ask for bank account information, we never ask for money, okay? So, it's easy. Last thing I want to mention is important. So, of course, we know about the power of the census that determines the number of seats each state has in the U.S. House of Representatives, so it's extremely important. But even more importantly, over $675 billion, $675 billion of federal funding is disseminated to states every year using formulas that use census data, okay? New Jersey receives over $17 billion every year for their top 16 programs. These are programs like Medicaid and SNAP, highway planning and construction, Section 8 housing, special education grants, Title 1 grants, the National School Lunch Program, WIC, Head Start, foster care, health center programs. If people choose not to be counted, or they get missed in 2020, their families, their community members, their state will be penalized for the next 10 years due to result of an undercount. So, we need to get it right. In addition, a lot of private businesses, local governments, communities use our data for future planning. So, this is the one opportunity every 10 years where we're not taking a sample, where we're actually going out and we're visiting every address across the country. Again, I just want to mention that we have jobs available, so please, if you're interested, if you know someone who may be interested, we're willing to do job fairs, any kind of event we can do to promote the possibilities to work with us and get paid. So, thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you.
Quick question. How long do we have to be in order to apply for a job?
You need to be 18 years of age to work for us. You can apply right now if you're 17, and then as soon as your birthday comes, you will automatically be deemed qualified.
And what would that salary be?
$21 an hour.
Okay. Thank you.
So, the first point you made, that data is never released under any circumstances. It's important when we read about how some people are fearful to fill out a census form because of whatever reason that they may have going on in their lives, that they think if they fill it out, somebody's going to come knocking on their door. That can't happen under any circumstance.
That's correct. We cannot share household-level data or data on an individual to anyone. That's correct.
Under any circumstance.
Under any circumstance.
I think that's, you know...
Title 13, it would take an act of Congress to change Title 13 with a law that's been in place since the 1950s, been challenged multiple times.
God.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take Congress.
Yeah.
I just wanted to comment up, even though I missed the most important presentation, I did, one of your representatives was at the latest Patterson Alliance meeting, they made themselves very, that was a good place for the bead of honor of organizations that were there to hear that, and it was a good presentation. I was a census numerator when I was in college. It was a great job for someone my age, it was great pay, and, but what I, the point I made, a few days ago, the point I'd love to make to you, is that it's very imperative that these jobs go to the neighborhoods and the census tracts where we have the lowest response rates. And those are neighborhoods in Patterson here especially, Passaic, other urban communities, where people from outside will not get, one, they'll not get a good response rate from the people they come to, two, they won't stay and properly do the job if they don't know the surroundings and who they're with and all that, and three, these jobs, which are well-paying, good jobs, should go to community people. It would do a lot of good in those communities, and so I hope in efforts, maybe not just to collect the census data, but that we push these jobs specifically in those communities where we hope to see the greatest change in the response rate, because I know there's certain census tracts where the response rate is especially low in urban communities. So, I just want to make that point again, very important to push those jobs in those areas.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I actually agree with that. Eric, do you want to add on behalf of the Secretary of State? Lauren? Actually, Lauren's going to speak. For the...
Good evening, Freeholders. I'm Lauren Spire. I'm the Director of International Affairs for the Department of State, and I'm the leading us on this 2020 effort for the department. I will be assisting the New Jersey Complete Count Commission, establishing partnerships throughout the state, and coordinating with state departments and agencies. The commission is composed of 27 members, representing the Senate, the Assembly, the Latino and Black Caucus, the Department of Labor, a designate from the Governor's Office, and several community representatives. The Chair of the Commission is Secretary of State, Teisha Wick. The law directs the Commission to develop, recommend, and assist in the administration of 2020 census outreach strategy. The main objective of the Commission is to encourage full participation in the decennial census, to ensure an accurate and complete count of New Jersey's population. Under the law, the Department of State has been passed with convening New Jersey's efforts with the 2020 census through the Complete Count Commission. It directs the Department of State to provide the staff services necessary to support the functions of the Commission, to coordinate outreach strategies, and provide administrative support. The Commissioners are a distinguished group of committed individuals, and they have a very important task ahead. The federal work for the upcoming 2020 census is ongoing, and it is paramount that the state and the county supplement these efforts to ensure a complete count. The Commission will oversee an extensive statewide outreach to all stakeholders, driven by data and the diverse needs of New Jersey's part-to-count communities, HTCs, ensuring that all New Jerseyans are fully counted. Certain tracts in Apex, Union, Passaic, Mercer Camden, and other counties are considered HTCs. Approximately 22% of New Jerseyans live in these communities. Thus, the Commission will hold public hearings to receive testimony from the public, elected officials, experts, and others on ways to ensure a full count. The first public hearing was held in January, and our next public hearing is March 21st at Passaic Community College. The census directly determines subordination of representatives to Congress among the states. After the 2010 decennial census, New Jersey lost a congressional seat, and in fact, it lost a congressional seat in 1980 and in 1990. It also affects the distribution of hundreds of billions of dollars in federal funds to state, local governments, and other grantees, as Director Beeler stated. Additionally, to assist in the outreach efforts, we have asked the state departments and agencies to define a census liaison. Each census liaison will help provide information on federal and state census outreach strategies for the public, given many state agencies have outward-facing relationships or contact with the general public. We will also build a strong and extensive statewide grassroots community advocacy program to help feed the community, and that's one of Eric's tasks. Via the outreach program, we will develop an infrastructure that supports trusted messengers within our communities. They will carry out that core mission and work towards ensuring that all residents complete their census forms. These trusted messengers will be activist groups, advocacy groups, faith-based leaders, and hopefully, you will become a trusted messenger also. The backbone of the Census 2020 outreach effort will be the organizing, information, and complete count committees across the state. These committees will serve as the action team and community organizing hub for all resources and activities related to the census. And to amplify our message, a broad-based media and social media campaign will be deployed. Through these efforts, I'm confident we will achieve a successful 24th decennial census for New Jersey. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Lauren. I'm very, very grateful to have you here because you identified that phrase, hard-to-count communities. Passaic County, we have students, communities of color, immigrant communities, particular communities where English is not typically the first language, all of those people who are residents of this county and of this country who are intended to be counted, and we're going to work hard to see to it that they're counted. On our main meeting agenda tonight, we'll be adopting the resolution that created the Passaic County Complete Count Committee. So, what I'd like to do is introduce the members of that committee as it's being initially formed. We can take a quick photo, and then the Complete Count Committee is actually going to adjourn to our conference room with all of you and have its direct meeting and get things started, because as you pointed out, 2019 is the year when we've got to do this educational work to get out those messages that you were saying, so that come January 2020, when this count begins, online and by phone and on the mail, and ultimately, with knocks at people's doors, people recognize, first of all, how important it is, and second of all, that their data is going to be safe. So, with that, let me just introduce and ask you to come up to the front, the members of the Complete Count Committee as we're forming this tonight. Dr. Kathy Joshi will be one of the co-chairs of the committee. Dr. Joshi is a professor of education at Fairleigh Dickinson University, the author and editor of multiple books on Asian immigrant communities in America. She worked on census education in the Indian-American community in New Jersey in 2010 and in Boston in the year 2000. Full disclosure, she's also my wife. Dr. Joshi is joined as co-chair by Miguel Diaz, Deputy Mayor of the City of Patterson, whose portfolio includes the subcity's census preparedness efforts. Miguel's a longtime organizer of Passaic County's Spanish-speaking immigrant communities. She couldn't make it, but Dr. Javina Ahmed of Toluah is a businesswoman of great accomplishment, co-owner of Chief of Pharmacy in South Patterson, a member of the Passaic County Board of Social Services, and a generous supporter of our county's work with the community. Carol Cuadrado is with us tonight. She's a former counter for the United States Census, longtime member of the Passaic County Board of Social Services, and is longtime Chief of Staff. Senator Nellie Poe knows her way around Passaic County, and she'll help us make this count happen. Numerator. I apologize. Numerator. I'm trying to go for the denominator code, and it's just working. But I do want to welcome Councilwoman Maria Cuardinare from the Township of Little Falls, a realtor and educator, someone with great reach into many communities that make up the Passaic Valley region, of Passaic County in particular. Maria, thank you for being part of the committee. Edwin Garcia is Deputy Mayor of Civic Engagement, Information Technology, Communications for the City of Passaic, a longtime public school teacher with a master's degree in educational technology. And this online stuff and the outreach that we're going to do with social media, Edwin, I'm thrilled to have you on the team. Ms. Nancy Greer of Patterson is here with us, a past Black History Month honoree, in fact. So, it's a nice coincidence to have you here tonight. She's a community outreach specialist with Patterson's Neighborhood Assistance Office, a leader in Patterson cares, and someone with deep reach and understanding of the homeless and transy population in Passaic County, which is going to be so hard to count. Neela Maduba is here, or is she?
Yes.
Neela, great. I didn't get to speak to you and say hello beforehand. Neela is a founding board member and outreach coordinator of the Bangladeshi-American Women's Development Initiative, or BODI. She speaks Bangladeshi and specifically the Seleni dialect, a common to a community here in Passaic County, and is an educator as well. Councilwoman Alisa Minz of Patterson, Councilwoman, a past Board of Education member, a member of the clergy, which is going to be a key part of our outreach, and one of those folks who, in public service, is very visible and accessible in the work that she does. I know Salon Mustafa from Clifton was not able to join us. He was going to send someone. Is someone here on Salon's behalf? Okay. Salon is Vice President of Financial Planning at Citigroup, with a long and deep involvement in various regions in our county's Arid Lozen community, including the Islamic Center of Passaic County and Acker Valley High School. Ukesh Pandya of Clifton, I know, is with us. Ukesh Pandya is a longtime leader in the Indian-American community in Clifton and Passaic, and also a member of our team of the Passaic County Board of Social Services. Gabriela Perez of Passaic couldn't be with us because she's in fact overseas right now, but she's a social worker who not only worked on the 2010 U.S. census, but also on the 2000 Mexican census before she immigrated to the U.S. and to the city of Passaic. So, she'll be a great asset. And finally, Farid, the Dean of Toluah. Farid has a master's degree in urban education from New Jersey City University, is co-founder of the Community Outreach Association, Education Coordinator at the New Jersey Health Center, serving our county's Bangladeshi community. So, Jeff, this group of people, those who are here who aren't, speak at least half a dozen languages, connect to diverse communities that make up Passaic County, and this is the beginning of your Passaic County team. Let's take a quick picture, and then the Camp Committee and the Kansas Census Team are actually going to adjourn to our conference room and have their direct meeting. Will the committee come here and maybe freeholders have you on?
Take my chair. Give me a chair. Yes, please. Yes, please.
Good evening, everyone. And thanks for holding in with us. I know several people were here just for the Black History Month program. However, I can't think of a more important reason to come out. Before I even get started on this program, I want to tell you how important the census is, and a quick personal story about the census. One of my first jobs in high school, senior at Eastside High School back in 2000, was an numerator. Back then, I think the salary was $17 an hour, so I'm glad to see the federal government is, you know, believing in increasing that salary a little bit. So, for our students at Passaic County, I'm sorry, Rosa Park, please take advantage of that, and please get those jobs. That being said, also, last year, I got real serious in terms of doing my ancestry, and I filled out a profile on ancestry.com. I found out that I was really Irish. I thought I was a little Irish, but I found out that I was really Irish, on my mother's side. And on my father's side, I was able to go back all the way into the 1860 federal slave census count, okay? There is a document that exists back when African-Americans were still listed as property. And then, to my joy, to see 10 years later, in the next actual federal census, in which African-Americans were then by free, to see that person who was my great-great-grandfather, who was only listed as a number with his age 10 years prior, to now be listed and acknowledged by the federal government as a human being, as a person who actually existed. And through the United States federal census, I was able to go back, as I said, all the way to 1860, and find out all of my, you know, ancestors, my grandfather, my great-grandfather, and so forth, and just learn about the stories, what they did in terms of professions and so forth. So, nowadays, you know, not everybody takes it as serious. There's a lot more questions on the census now than there was back in the 1800s. However, it's just as important. And please, I encourage everyone to make sure that you complete the federal census. Even if you complete an incomplete census, and I want to make this perfectly clear, they still count it. So, even if you're only comfortable with writing in the number of people who live in your house, then do that, but don't leave it blank, because you have to be counted. That being said, I'd like to welcome everyone officially to our 2019 Black History Month program. Over the course of the last eight years, it's been my privilege to lead this body in celebrating the accomplishments of African-American people and people from the African diaspora who call Passaic County our home. Over the course of the last several years, however, we decided to come up with a theme of who we wanted to celebrate. Last year's theme, for example, was education, and this year's theme is healthcare. So, as you will see around the room, we have some people that you might not know about, but these are Africans, Americans, and Black people who have contributed greatly, not just to our own culture, but to the entire country with their contributions in the field of healthcare. To get us started, I'm going to ask for Reverend McLeod to please join me at the podium to lead us in prayer, and immediately following her, I'm going to ask that everyone remain standing for the singing of Negro National Anthem by none other than the great students at Ola El Park School, who are finally performing now.
God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, thou who hast brought us thus far all the way. Thou who hast brought us by might, led us into the light, lead us forever in the path we pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, God, we come before you this evening first to tell you thank you. We thank you, oh God, for waking us up this morning and starting us on our way. We thank you, oh God, because the bed that we laid in last night was not our cooling board. And we thank you, oh God, that the sheets that we wrapped ourselves in was not our winding sheets. God, we thank you for another opportunity and another chance to celebrate the contributions of African-Americans in the United States of America. We thank you, oh God, for those who shed their blood, those who suffered, bled, and died. Oh God, for the causes of civil rights and affordable housing and all types of civil rights issues, oh God. We thank you for those who shed their blood, oh God. We thank you for those tonight that we're going to honor in Passaic County. God, we realize that we have not always been good, but you've always been kind. And so, tonight, we ask that you would have mercy upon us according to your loving kindness, according to the multitude of your tender mercy. God, I ask tonight that you would move around this room and bless every family and every person that's represented in this room on tonight. God, I ask tonight that you would look on our political officials, all of our Freeholders, our county administrator. God, I'm asking you to bless them going out and bless them coming in. God, I'm asking you, God, to... God, I'm asking you, God, to think through their minds, speak through their lips, allow them to make the right decisions that affect people everywhere. God, we honor you tonight. We bless you. We bless your holy name. And we ask, God, that you would bind us together in love. Oh God, help us not just to be tolerant of one another, but God, teach us truly how to love one another. And God, we ask tonight that you would anoint us in the unity of love and peace. And this is your servant's prayer. We ask, in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Ghost, in Jesus' name, amen.
So every year, we like to have a display of talent. And Passaic County has enough talent to go around. And I'm very ecstatic about this next group who's performing. This is the Fusion Dance Collective, located in Woodland Park, New Jersey. The five young ladies who will be performing for you today will be performing a dance by none other than this Aretha Franklin, entitled "Respect."
Who are they, Jamie? After.
All right. So we have with us the Three Rilies, which I like to call them. Riley Vest, no relation. Riley S. Way, play high. Riley Everett. Riley Livingston Sweet. Pasham Millen. And Deanna Dedman. Thank you, ladies. Okay, you can have a seat. Those are seven, seven and eight-year-olds. Seven and eight-year-olds. So as I said, tonight's theme is healthcare. And we selected three wonderful individuals who exemplify and embody excellence in healthcare. The fact that they happen to be of African descent and black is just icing on the cake. But these professionals have done outstanding work, not just in the area of healthcare, but also made great contributions to the community as a whole. For our first presentation, I'm going to ask that Freeholder Lazaro, please come forward to make the first presentation to Dr. Mary Gardner.
Is there anyone here to represent Dr. Gardner? Yeah, she's Ellen. She couldn't make it tonight. So I'll just give you, I'll put them right down. The Patterson Community Healthcare Center is celebrating its 40th anniversary this year. And the work that they do is second to none. They take care of patients, some without healthcare, people who don't have money, who can't go to a doctor who's gone to charge the law. They really do a lot of work here. They have two locations. One is on Clay and Street, and the other one is on Broadway. So they're serving our neediest population. And they are just fulfilling a life's dream to take care of people. And I think that's what we all look for when we look at the group, they say, do you really care about people? And they really do. I am going to read this proclamation so that you can understand more about Dr. Gardner because she is such a phenomenal woman. So, whereas the month of February has been designated as Black History Month and in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional African Americans over the years, the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic deems fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Dr. Mary Elizabeth McKay Gardner. Whereas Dr. Mary Elizabeth McKay Gardner earned her BA, summa cum laude, from William Patterson University, her MA in Clinical Psychology, magna cum laude, from Fairleigh Dickinson University, and her PhD in Clinical Psychology, magna cum laude, from City University of New York. Whereas Dr. Mary Elizabeth McKay Gardner has been a New Jersey licensed practicing psychologist since 1985, she is an adjunct professor of psychology at Passaic County Community College, William Patterson University, and Fairleigh Dickinson University. She served 23 years as Chief Executive Officer of the Patterson Community Healthcare Center and was a clinical psychologist in Newer Preschool and served as a teen program director of the Ecumenical Association for Urban Concerns. Whereas Dr. Mary Elizabeth McKay Gardner takes pleasure in poetry, reading all kinds of news and from opera to hip-hop, and thinking meditation and problem-solving. And whereas Dr. Mary Elizabeth McKay Gardner is a daughter of Stephen and Minnie McKay, the sister of Roberta Stanley, Priscilla, and Helen White, of Floyd Edward Gardner, and mother of Floyd Edward Gardner Jr. and Stephen John Gardner. Whereas Dr. Mary Elizabeth McKay Gardner has been involved in many causes throughout the County of Passaic, and she has brought great honor and prestige, not only to herself, but to Passaic County as well. And the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic would like to express its gratitude and appreciation for her distinguished service to the community. So now, therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that it hereby recognizes and applauds Dr. Mary Elizabeth McKay Gardner for the significant contributions she has made and the exemplary service she has unselfishly devoted to the community. And be further proclaimed that this board extends its sincere best wishes to Dr. Mary Elizabeth McKay Gardner for continued success in all her future endeavors. We thank Dr. Gardner for everything she's done.
Next, we're going to ask Freeholder Patrick Ford to make our next presentation to Dr. Charlene Gungill.
Before I read what's on this proclamation, just a couple of words. I interact with Dr. Gungill on a daily basis almost. She leads our health department here in Passaic County. And the story of the success of the health department in Passaic County is starting to grow. And many municipalities are starting to look to Passaic County. Dr. Gungill runs our health department also. So you've actually brought us to the next level. And I'm very happy to have you here. The month of February has been designated Black History Month in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional African Americans over the years. The Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic deems fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Dr. Charlene Williams Gungill. DHS, CPM. Now you can clap. Whereas Dr. Charlene Williams Gungill is a graduate of Nobles Southeastern University, the former UN DMJ School of Public Health, now Rutgers, Montclair State University, and William Patterson University. Hey, you see, that's the long years. Dr. Charlene Gungill is a Director of Health and the Health Officer of the County of Passaic, and the NJDOH Health Officer and Registered Environmental Health Specialist. She is a longtime public health administrator and advocate. She is the Vice Chair of the Health Coalition of Passaic County, President of Passaic County Public Health Partnership, Trustee of the Partnership of Maternal and Child Health of Northern New Jersey, and she serves under the Passaic County Food Policy Council, North Jersey Health Collaborative, and Northwest Regional Health Coalition, Urban Area Security Initiative, and a number of other health and community-related organizations where we find the time.
She doesn't sleep.
Dr. Gungill loves teaching. Dr. Gungill loves teaching and mentoring the next generation of public health officials. She is an instructor of public health at William Patterson University and an adjunct professor at the Certified Public Manager Program at Rutgers University. Dr. Gungill has completed the boundary-spanning leadership program from the Centers for Creative Leadership and has special interest in global health for which she holds a graduate certificate, including women and minority population health investigations, disaster preparedness, and management. Dr. Gungill has been married to Gers for more than 30 years, and they have two children, Ariel and Arzal. Dr. Gungill has given unselfishly of her time and energy to the community, which has earned her the respect of one and all who come in contact with her. Dr. Gungill has been involved in many causes throughout the County of Passaic, and she has brought honor and prestige not only to herself, but to Passaic County as well. And the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic would like to express its gratitude and appreciation for, to her, for her distinguished service to the community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Dr. Charlene Williams Gungill for the significant contributions she has made and will continue to make and the exemplary service she has unselfishly devoted to the community. And be it further proclaimed that this board extends its sincere best wishes to Dr. Gungill for continued success in all her future endeavors.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to every member of the Freeholder Board for this recognition. I deeply appreciate it. Thank you to all my family and friends and colleagues who are here to celebrate with me. I appreciate your effort.
We love you.
Thank you to my co-wardies, Dr. Pruden and Dr. Gardner, without whom I could not be standing here because of our collaborations. I am honored to receive this recognition for my service in the community. I am also humbled because when I think of Black History Month, I don't think of me. I think of great African Americans like Frederick Douglass, like Martin Luther King Jr., like Harriet Tubman. like Martin Luther King Jr., like Harriet Tubman, like Sojourner Truth, like Michael Jordan, like Barack Obama. I don't think of me. I am humbled because what I do is follow my passion for public health and service. I work not for recognition but to improve the lives of those who live, love, work, and play in this community. And so on this special day, I am grateful that this African-American immigrant could come to this great nation to follow my dream of service to my fellow man and receive this kind of accolade. Though I don't take this lightly. I am humbled. I am honored. And I will continue to do this work because it is my heart and my purpose in life. It is my privilege to serve my fellow man. Thank you.
I'd also like to mention that our 35th Legislative District was kind enough to present a joint resolution from their staff, which is our Senator Nellie Poe, Assemblywoman Benji Remberly, and Assemblywoman Shavon Desumpther for all of our honorees. And since I'm on that, I'd also like to acknowledge a couple of dignitaries that we have here with us today. You heard that she was going to be here earlier. Traffic got to her, but she's here now. Our Secretary of State and former Freeholder, Ms. T. Ishway. Councilman from the town of Prospect Park and Riley's granddaddy, Robert Artis. Councilwoman of the Fourth Ward for the City of Patterson, where I was an numerator. And former Mayor of the City of Patterson, Ms. Ruby Cotton, Councilwoman Cotton. We also have with us our President of the St. County Community College Board, Ms. Barbara Kenz. Even though he needs no introduction, always there keeping us safe throughout the entire County of Passaic is our great Sheriff, Sheriff Richard. And I believe we also have with us Mayor of the great City of Heldon, Mayor Stan Holm. And, as any good husband would do, Lou informed us that we have with us as well our great clerk for the County of Passaic, Ms. Danielle Irons. Hope to sit in the front row so I can see her. Our next honoree, I'll be making this presentation because the man literally saved my life. So I'm going to ask him to join us up here, and that is Dr. James Prudin. So, as we know, Freeholder actor also works at St. Joe's Hospital, that's his day job. But I asked him to give me the honor of making this presentation. And the reason being is that on several occasions, I found myself in the emergency room at St. Joe's Hospital. And it was Dr. Prudin who serviced me. Probably doesn't remember, but on one occasion I came in with a dislocated shoulder. Very, very painful, very painful. So while I was waiting to be served, he just happened to walk by and he was like, "Hey, man, how you doing?" And slapped me in the shoulder. And I told him, "I would be doing better if I could get the shoulder into place." And again, he helped me guide it into place. Without, in order to get the shoulder back in place, normally they knock you out, they put you to sleep, they tie a sheet around your arm, and you literally ain't get back into place. And there's a very long recovery that takes place afterwards. And this man being a genius, he was like, "Just relax, you know, kind of just let your arm dangle there." And, you know, "Kip, kip," popped it right back into place. And like a good employee, went right back to work after that. So I want to thank him for that. So I will read you this proclamation. Whereas the month of February has been designated as Black History Month and in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional African-Americans over the years, the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize James N. Prudin, M.D., F A C D P. And whereas Dr. Prudin is a graduate of Howard University Medical College of, I'm sorry, University College of Medicine in Washington, DC. So he has some HBCU alums in the house. Where he is responsible, I'm sorry, where he completed his internship in internal medicine at the College of Medicine and Dentistry of New Jersey and his residency in international medicine at Howard University Hospital in Washington, DC. Whereas Dr. Prudin is the Director of Preparedness for St. Joe's Healthcare Systems, where he is responsible for maximizing readiness and responsive to irregular and overwhelming events that may or have exceeded the standard response capacity of the system and its components that's complicated. Whereas Dr. Prudin has been an emergency physician for over 36 years at St. Joe's University Hospital, which is the third busiest emergency department in the country with over 170,000 visits a year. Whereas Dr. Prudin has served in the educational capacity for many of local paid and volunteer EMS groups, helping to develop treatment protocols, disaster response strategies, and in finding ways to develop resilience in the crews and their crews. Whereas Dr. Prudin has been involved in emergency response activities, emergency management and deployments, and serves on the New Jersey Task Force One, USAR, as Deputy Medical Manager. He has developed, he was deployed to the World Trade Center in the aftermath of September 11 attacks, including Hurricane Katrina and Hurricane gust and the floodings in Vaudrop, Fairfield, and Patterson. And whereas Dr. Prudin is an active in Village Initiative, Safe City Patterson, St. Paul's CDC, and serves as the Chairman of the New Jersey Emergency Medical Services Council and the New Jersey Mobile Disaster Preparedness Education and other healthcare initiatives and educational programs. And whereas Dr. Prudin has given unselfishly of his time and energy to the community, which has earned him the respect of one and all. Whereas Dr. Prudin has been involved in many causes throughout the County of Passaic and he has brought honor and prestige not only to himself but to the St. County as well. And the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic would like to express its gratitude and appreciation to him for his distinguished service to the community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Dr. Prudin for the significant contributions he has made and his explanatory service he has unselfishly devoted to the community. And be it further proclaimed that this board extends its sincere best wishes to Dr. Prudin for continued success and future endeavors. Thank you, Dr.
Thank you very much. Like Charlene, I've learned that healthcare is a team sport. And I get to stand up here in front of you because I get to do things with the support of those around me in the St. County, Patterson Division of Health, and those at St. Joe's Healthcare System. An astounding group of people who frequently go home every day paying a personal price for the care they provide for those who come in seeking assistance. So I'm very proud and honored to be here and recognized, but I also understand that this recognition is not for me, but it is for them. I am also very lucky that I am an adrenaline junkie and I have found a socially acceptable way to dispatch those energies. So I get to do all kinds of things, but that's because I'm surrounded by people who are willing to help and willing to serve. And speaking of service, when we think of Martin Luther King, look up his comments on service. Then look up Gandhi's comments on service. And then look at Nelson Mandela's comments on service and Muhammad Ali's comments on service. And all these great men and women and great thinkers point out that a life lived without serving others is a life wasted. So once again, thank you very much for this honor.
Now, we have also a very special presentation this evening. But before we get to that, I just wanted to let everybody know to hang around. After our final award, we're going to have two selections from the students at Rosa El Park School of Fine and Performing Arts, followed by, if you would like to join us, refreshments downstairs. And in Black History Month, refreshments means normally fried chicken, fish. We got baked chicken today that I forgot, fried chicken. We knew it was helping here, so we were trying to be able to. Some candy yams, mac and cheese, collard greens. So I want to thank the owner. I want to thank the owner of Cornbread Restaurant, who provided the catering. Joseph Knight is a graduate of the St. County Tech. He is in his early twenties and he owns four businesses, four restaurants. So I'm putting an eye on him. So even though we were celebrating or honoring people in healthcare, normally we do a program as well for Dr. Martin Luther King Day. This year, we did not do a program for Dr. Martin Luther King Day, but we found it extremely appropriate that we do honor an individual during Black History Month that best exemplifies everything that Dr. King stood for. And to make that presentation, I'm going to call our Freeholder Terry Duffy to give us our Dr. Martin Luther King recipient during the Black History Month, Mr. Jeffrey Sims.
Don't come up until I call you, like. I don't know how you get in such a prestigious group of doctors. And now we got Jeffrey Sims. He's been my friend for probably 40 years. My privilege and honor to read this. Whereas the month of February has been designated as Black History Month in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional African, those African-Americans over the years. I apologize. The Board of Chosen Freeholders, Freeholders of the County of Passaic, deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to bestow on Jeffrey A. Sims both Martin Luther King's Junior Award. And whereas Detective Jeffrey Sims served the City of Patterson Police Department. He's performed for 28 years. He worked in motorcycle unit, patrol unit, traffic division, major crimes, homicide division, SVU, sex crimes, child abuse, missing persons, juvenile division, community policing, and also served as a certified police instructor in fatal accident reconstruction investigation. Whereas Jeffrey A. Sims received his police training from Patterson Police Academy, Northwestern University of Police Science, the Jersey State Police, NYPD, FBI, DEA, Secret Service, and the Jersey Division of Criminal Justice. Whereas Jeffrey A. Sims was elected to the Executive Court of Patterson PPA Number One and served as a member of the state board for 20 years until his retirement in 2013. He served as Recording Secretary from 1993 to 2001, Executive Vice President from 2001 to 2013, State Delict from 2003 to 2013, American Delected from the Patterson Police Department. Whereas Jeffrey A. Sims served on the following committees in New Jersey State PPA Civil Service Chairman, Legislative Bargaining, Shields and Goff, and he served as Representative on the Governor's Advisory Committee for Police Standards, serving on the Governors of Brady, Cody, and Corzine. Whereas Jeffrey A. Sims received several awards, accommodations throughout his career, and recognition of his work in civic and union activities, including Senate and Assembly citations. Whereas Jeffrey A. Sims is a lifetime member of the Patterson Police Department of PPA Level One, New Jersey State PPA. He is a member of the New Jersey Honors Committee and Honored Member of the NYPD, Detectives Endowment Association, and the Blue Knights International Law Enforcement Motorcycle Club. Whereas Jeffrey A. Sims has given unselfishly of his time and energy to the community, which has earned him the respect of one and all who come into contact with him. Whereas Jeffrey A. Sims has been involved in many causes throughout the County of Passaic and he has brought honor and prestige not only to himself but to the St. County as well. And the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic would like to express its gratitude and appreciation to him for his distinguished service to this community. That's my favorite part. It's like the Wizard of Oz, so pay attention, all right? Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Jeffrey A. Sims for the significant contributions he has made and the exemplary service he has unselfishly devoted to the community. And be it further proclaimed that this board extends its sincere best wishes to Jeffrey Sims for his continued success and all his future endeavors. My honor, my presence.
First and foremost, I would like to thank the entire Freeholder Board for this, you know, this award, this honor tonight. I'll make my remarks short and brief because I've been doing this a long time and I know that I stay between you guys and getting out of here with food. But like those that came before me, we do what we do, not for recognition, although it is nice to be recognized by, you know, by others. We do it because we truly find joy in helping those in our community. One of my biggest passions as a detective was, when I worked in the areas, was anything to do with children, whether it was working child abuse cases or working for the juvenile division. I had the great honor of working with, one of the honorees here tonight, Dr. Prudin, under the Village Initiative and Project St. Neighborhood. And for those who don't know what that is, it was a collaborative effort between the Patterson Police Department, St. County Probation Department, State Probate, and Juvenile Justice, and other faith-based groups. And our mission was to try and reduce the recidivism rate amongst juvenile offenders. Okay, so we were basically charged with supervising the most high-risk juvenile offenders to see if we couldn't straighten them out, for lack of a better term. And we were quite successful and we did it as a whole, as a community. Like I said, it was not just the capacity department or probation department or any of that. But, you know, we came together as a village, hence the term Village Initiative, and we were quite successful. So that's where my biggest joy comes from, is being there and serving others. I'm a long family of members that served. So, you know, again, I just want to thank the Freeholder Board. And I'm honored and definitely humbled by this because given the company who came up here before me. So thank you.
Okay, everyone, so now I'm going to turn the stage over to Mr. Chapman and the wonderful students at the Rosa El Park School of Fine and Performing Arts. While the students are gathering, again, I want to remind you immediately, following While the students are gathering, again, I want to remind you immediately following the program, we'll have refreshments downstairs. I also wanted to just acknowledge the Quint family who's here with us. We have, as I like to call them, Mama and Papa Quint, the proud grandparents of one of the students who performed for us earlier today with the Fusion Dance Collective. And I wanted to acknowledge their leader as well, Ms. Daisy Maddox, who led the... Mr. Chapman, floor, Joseph.
Before we start, I just wanted to tell you guys a couple of things. So, very proud of this group. We were in NJT North last year, competing against schools with fifteen hundred kids in it, and we have about three hundred in our school, and we had the highest ratings. We were rated distinguished in every category out of probably forty or fifty high schools. So, these guys work really hard, and I'd just like to give you, let you guys know what we're doing at Rosa Parks, because we do a lot of great music, and I'm a great fan of jazz. So the first song we're going to do for you is, was made famous by Billie Holiday, "God Bless the Child," but it's an Ella Fitzgerald version of it. And in the center, we have two, we're going to feature Kevon and Yaziri, they're going to do some scatting. You guys all know what scat singing is, right?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
They improvise, they improvise on the melody. Oh, you tease them. And then, one last thing I want to tell you, right? So, spirituals are great music, and everybody thinks that, you know, spirituals were written a long time ago, even say forty, fifty years ago. I think Moses Hogan was one of the great last, last great spiritual writers. So I'm listening to different choral things, and I hear this, this young guy, I wish I could remember his name, he's writing spirituals today. And the second song we're going to do is called "Nothing's Gonna Stumble My Feet." And it's a spiritual written four years ago, and it's phenomenal. It's in five, sometimes six different parts. I think you'll appreciate how complex it is when they do it. These guys are great.
And that God shall get, and that God shall lose. Though the Bible says, and it's due to be. Mama may have, and Papa may have, but God bless the child that's God's own, that's God's own. Yes, the strong and more, while the weak must fail. Empty pockets full, never be the bread. Mama may have, and Mama may have, but God bless the child that's God's own, that's God's own. Money, you got lots of bread, throw it round the door. When your God is ready, they don't come round no more, no, no. Insolations give, 'cause the bread is sour. You can help yourself, but don't take too much. Mama may have, and Papa may have, but God bless the child that's God's own, that's God's own. When your God is ready, they don't come round no more, no, no. Insolations give, 'cause the bread is sour. You can help yourself, but don't take too much. Mama may have, and Papa may have, but God bless the child that's God's own, that's God's own.
Again, everyone, uh... Again, everyone, I want to thank you all for coming out this evening and joining us for our annual Black History Month program. We're going to finish our meeting and then go on into our regular meeting. So if anyone wanted to now leave and go downstairs and enjoy some good soul food cooking, we excuse you. So thank you for coming out, and hopefully we'll see you soon. Thank you.
Directors, moving to the Board, we have amended resolution for R. 133, Adjust and Corrective Action Technical Amendments. The first thing started is 139, which is a resolution authorizing a non, fair, non-open contract to Dell Tech Inc. of Trent, New Jersey, for installation of new office space at the Day Mansion Visitor Center in Wayne. And then, uh, 140 is a resolution referring litigation entitled Mildred Diaz versus Wilfredo Valentine to the law firm of Hunt, Hamlin, and Ridley to provide outside legal services to Passaic County. Uh, 141 is a resolution referring litigation entitled Lynn Stillman versus City of Patterson to the law firm of Buglion, Hutton, and Dale. 142, sorry. Through you, Director, to the Board, a resolution referring litigation entitled Eli Mansal versus Clifton Highland Association et al., including Passaic County, to the law firm of Afrend and Wenzel. And finally, 143, resolution creating the Passaic County Complete County Commission to encourage participation in the 2020 Decennial Census.
Very good, thank you. Just to clarify, that was L. 3943?
Yes.
Great.
With the amended resolution, Freeholder Board.
Thank you. Oh, yes, and the amended 38. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Freeholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Dumpy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazera.
Here.
Director Bartlet.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, notice requirement of the public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted a reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk, post in the administration building, and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law. Freeholders, after.
Here.
Best.
Here.
Dumpy.
Here.
James.
Here.
LaFour.
Here.
Deputy Director Lazera.
Here.
Director Bartlet.
Here.
O God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to so that bless thy servants, our freeholders in this county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen. Please show me the flag. Flag, flag.
The flag of the United States of America, and the jury public for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please maintain this for a moment, passing for memory, all the men and women who died while serving in the United States of America, and those who create people practically killed in the act of, to celebrate. Thank you. Moving along to item F on our agenda, I believe that needs to be preceded by a motion to suspend the regular order of business. Can I have a motion in seconds to suspend? Role call? Freeholders, after.
No.
Best.
Yes.
Dumpy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
LaFour.
Here.
Deputy Director Lazera.
Yes.
Director Bartlet.
Yes.
In that case, may I have a motion in second for the resolution F. 1? Role call. Freeholders, after.
No.
Best.
Yes.
Dumpy.
No.
James.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazera.
Yes.
Director Bartlet. Resolution passes by. Before we return to the regular order of business, there was a resolution appointing Michael Glovan as the State County Council for a term moving forward from today. Mr. Glovan will be joining us on the day as of our next meeting. Counsel Phil, I'm very glad to have you here today, and I think I speak on behalf of the entire Freeholder Board, thanking you for the twenty-one years of excellent service you put in for our county, and appreciate your meaningful...
Thank you.
Through the Director. Here's a loyal Democrat, big family, been here twenty years. I oppose the process of what we just did. I think could have been handled a lot, a lot better. I think we all should have been inclusive in it, not just a select few. And I'm laughing and embellishing on it, you all know how I feel. It's, and Mike Glovan and I go way, way back, and he's more than capable of doing it, but this gentleman that we just tossed aside has been doing it for twenty-one years, and all of a sudden, we're starting to eat on one.
Director, through you, I'd like to thank Bill Pascal III, who I've known for a while and before becoming Freeholder, as a friend and someone who's helped mentor me throughout my career, and given me lots of good advice, again, before I became an elected official, lots of good advice on ethics and on the law and on how government works. And I think we're sorely going to miss him in a county, but I want to thank him. This was a county that had a terrible ethics record before he came. There were freeholders who went to jail because of the conduct of this Freeholder Board. The record, I'm proud to say, in his twenty-one years here, of the ethics and the record of this Board has been flawless and clean, and that is because of the rules and the ethics that he put in. And I'm very disappointed in, I don't make comments often on journalism and what's printed, but I was very disappointed what was written in the record, the insinuations made about his record and his work on this Board. He has never once been cited negatively that I know of for his conduct here or outside of this Board. It is a clean record, all the facts have always been known, there were no new facts brought out. I'm not certain why those insinuations of anything had to be made about the way, not only that Bill Pascal III conducts himself, but the way the county council's office conducts itself. To be very clear, the county council's office does not tell us who to give contracts to or who not to give contracts to. That is not the work of the county council's office, any of the councils, and I would not expect it to be, and I've never heard it as such. So any insinuations or otherwise to the contrary are false. And I want to thank again Bill Pascal III, who has seen the county jail through a difficult consent decree, who has seen a battle, a fight of federal government that we had over ten million dollars missing, finally come to fruition. Thankful to his office, and I think I would personally miss him, and I think our county misses thinking, Bill, for what you've done, and I'm sorry that the process failed.
Thank you, Frithman.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to return to the regular order of business?
Director Mad, just say a word, is that acceptable to the Board? Is that okay? Well, first of all, I want to congratulate Mike Glovan, my deputy, who's been in the county council's office for thirty-eight years and is well-deserved of this position. I'm proud to see him elevated to that. And Mike is on the verge of retiring soon, so this is a very nice way to cap his career. Most importantly, being here twenty-one years, I've been through twenty freeholders, four clerks, three sheriffs, three surrogates, and three prosecutors. I've enjoyed this job immensely. I thank you for permitting me the opportunity and the privilege to be able to be the Passaic County Council, in Passaic County for the past twenty-one years. Most importantly, this office is exceptional. The people in it do not turn over irregularly. I've only had two deputies, Matt Moffa and Mike Glovan. I know that there's another deputy coming up through the ranks who I am proud to have worked to bring him to the county council's office, and that is Kevin McDuffie, who was a former judge on Patterson Bench. Tonight is a good night, this is a great county. I am so proud to have served this county with honor and distinction, and I thank you for the privilege. Michael, I wish you the best. I really appreciate, Nadez, you being here, a new addition to our office, as well as John Pogarelic, and Jose Santiago, and the administrative staff. Thank you, freeholders, for the privilege to serve you. I wish you well, and I'm looking forward, I'm looking forward to working with you for a smooth and seamless transition, obviously, as you transition to a full-time county council, and you couldn't have a better guy than Mike Glovan.
Thank you very much, Bill.